It's silent. Parliamentary privilege applies to witnesses in relation to evidence they give today. However, it does not apply to what witnesses say outside the hearings. So I urge witnesses to be careful about making comments to the media or to others after completing their evidence. In addition, the Legislative Council has adopted rules to provide procedural fairness for inquiry participants. And so I encourage committee members and witnesses to be mindful of these procedures. So Mr. Moes, can I just welcome you and thank you for taking time to give the evidence. Can you please state your name, position, title, and swear either an oath or affirmation? I believe you've been provided with copies of.
That's correct. My name is Godfrey Edward Moes. I'm an executive director at the United Workers Union and I'll be doing an affirmation today. So I solemnly, sincerely, and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. And do you have a short opening statement before we go to free flow questions from the committee?
Yes, I do. The United Workers Union represents RSPCA inspectors in New South Wales. Working as an RSPCA inspector is dangerous, tough, and takes its emotional toll. This is true even when inspectors feel like everything is running well in their own workplace. When they feel like serious allegations of bullying and harassment by senior management are going unaddressed, this can push even the most resilient of inspectors to breaking point. No one does this job for the money. Our members care, our members become inspectors because they care. They become inspectors because they care fundamentally about animal welfare. They do it because they care about life, the lives of animals, and the lives of people intersecting with animals. When, however, they feel like they must navigate a toxic workplace culture, it curtails their ability to fulfill their mission. The United Workers Union notes that serious allegations of bullying and harassment by senior management are not being addressed to our satisfaction. And that this managerial culture is the primary cause of widely publicised issues with respect to animal welfare. Good leaders take responsibility and ineffective leaders seek to blame those under them. The allegations our members have raised with us include matters ranging from the use of disparaging and/or abusive language towards employees to the issuing of unreasonable and unsafe managerial direction. While we have entered correspondence with the RSPCA New South Wales CEO, Mr. Stephen Coleman, in the last fortnight with respect to an independent investigation into these matters, as per an initial request of our members in early April, we have to date no confirmation that an independent investigator has been engaged, no confirmation about the potential terms of reference for such an investigation, and no confirmation that the RSPCA New South Wales will facilitate access to training on responsible and reasonable management practices to senior management to mitigate or control against the risk of bullying and harassment. We have deep concerns that unless immediate action is taken on this front, that the additional money earmarked to the RSPCA for an additional 12-month period will not increase the quality of overall services as much as intended, but only mitigate against the impact of this issue on animal welfare in New South Wales. Thank you.
Thank you. So we've just, the committee's agreed to go to free flow questions. So I'm just looking for people to take out the minute. Mr. Fang?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you very much for agreeing to provide evidence today and allowing your members, inspectors, to have a voice. And I must say, it's very pleasing to see a union that doesn't waste money because I can see there's no artwork on the walls. So I'm very, very pleased to see that you're very diligent with the funds of your members. So in that respect, in relation to your, in relation to your members, they've obviously spoken to you about the way in which the management engages with them as an inspectorate. Can you just give us a little bit of the detail around the bullying and harassment allegations that have been given to you from the RSPCA inspectors?
Yes, I can outline some of that. So beginning January 2024, we were made aware of seven formal complaints regarding the behaviour and conduct of senior management in the inspectorate that was raised with Human Resources. Again, as I said from the beginning of this year, the allegations they raged from that disparaging and abusive language towards employees, to the issue of unreasonable and unsafe management direction, various allegations of bullying and harassment by senior management, and what we're talking about, namely the deputy chief inspector. Now, our concern is that the, from the United Workers Union perspective, that the investigations conducted by HR in relation to this matter concluded that the allegations were unsubstantiated and no further action was required to address what we believe and what our members are telling us is a deep cultural problem. And our members are deeply dissatisfied with the process undertaken by HR to investigate those complaints. Our members feel they lack transparency, thoroughness, and procedural fairness. And our members are further concerned that the investigations didn't consider the subjective impact of the alleged conduct on the complainants. And it's taking its toll on the members' ability to be out in the field and do their job.
So has the membership said to you that they believe that part of the reason why these investigations find no senior management to have done any wrong is because that ultimately there's, I guess, a cabal, for want of a better word, in relation to the way that senior management, HR, and senior inspectorate operate?
There've been various comments made to the union that talk about the relationships and a degree of nepotism. It's really important that members feel like they can vent freely and openly to their union representatives when they have serious issues. And so I don't want to mischaracterise that or put any of our individual members in the open for being able to freely vent. But the sum total of those comments raised to the union is that there is a culture of nepotism, to put it to a better term, that is not meeting what they see as the chief mission in terms of animal welfare in the RSPCA and leading to a degradation of the quality of the work that people can do. And I think that a lot of our members and inspectors feel like, in the public domain, now they're the ones getting the blame for what is really leadership-level issues in the functionality of the RSPCA.
I guess what I'm alluding to is that it isn't that you're hearing this from only one of the inspectors that you represent or two of the inspectors that you represent. Is it fair to say that this is coming from the majority of the people that have spoken to your union in relation to the issues at the RSPCA? Or in fact, is it the case that this is from the vast majority or even all of the people that have spoken to you about issues at the RSPCA?
Yeah, you can never definitively prove a negative. So I don't fully know what every single inspector in the RSPCA in New South Wales thinks.
I mean, the ones that have spoken to you in relation to the representation you provide them as a union.
Yes, yes. This is far more than two. And even if it was two, it can be the nature of systemic workplace bullying, that a couple of people get kicked out or only a couple of people are prepared to speak up initially. And it's our duty as a unit to take those sorts of complaints seriously. But, you know, this is a group of people who have experienced a common issue and their good sense on the job here needs to be listened to and respected in order for good public policy decision-making to come about.
Thank you.
Can I ask, who needs? Sorry, I just wanted to get clarification on the numbers. So when you say that there were seven allegations, is that seven people making allegations or fewer than that making seven allegations? Can you just tell us what that means?
Yeah, so several, seven formal complaints. My understanding is that there is a group of more than seven inspectors that have these sorts of issues. I would need to go to the file, and I'm happy to make it on notice, as to whether that group of more than seven inspectors have each made formal complaints. But we are talking about, we are talking about a diverse and wide-ranging group of inspectors who have an issue here.
Yeah, if you could just let us know because we've heard, and I think the RSPCA themselves, when they came back on questions on notice, said that there were seven allegations. And I just wanted to know how many people that was making those allegations? And also how many RSPCA inspectors you represent entirely?
Yep, I can do that. What I would say is there are more inspectors who feel an affinity with these issues or are in an agreement with these issues than have made formal complaints per se because there is the difference. We've got to disentangle there with people who have been directly subject to this behaviour and made a formal complaint and people who are co-workers who would agree with that but haven't necessarily made a formal complaint themselves, are ready and willing to cooperate in any sort of independent investigation into the matter.
Can I just ask, in terms of your comments, what, at what level of the organisation should change need to occur? I mean, are we talking about the level of the executive? Are we talking about this mysterious board? Or is there some, we've heard that there really isn't another oversight body closely examining and watching and checking, you know, what the organisation's doing. I mean, can you point to what, what if, what level or indeed all levels there needs to be some, yeah, some monitoring and change?
Yes, well, I can point to what our members have vocalised to us. And their issues really go to the senior management, so the senior operational day-to-day management that they're dealing with, particularly in the inspectorate. And they feel like a lot of the issues that they've come up against in the last few months do result back from an appointment made quite recently with respect at the deputy chief inspector level. If that is the case, and I'm just explaining what our members are vocalising to here rather than statements of fact.
Not to your members?
Yes, there are members and our, and our members have very good reasons for what they're saying as well. So I don't want to discount that. But they're coming back from the senior management level. Now, there are questions that are raised to that, which I don't have the answer for, about how that appointment was made, who was involved in that appointment, and then where does it go? But what our members are experiencing for them is that breakdown at senior operational management level.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. McDonald?
Just, thank you. RSPCA, so in their annual report, they said they've got 560 staff. Obviously, not all of those are members of the union. How many would be members of the union?
Yes, so what I'm talking, we represent the inspectors in New South Wales, which is a far smaller group than 560 staff that we're talking about. And to the extent that we're raising issues, it's with the senior operational leadership of the inspectorate. And the coverage rules with the RSPCA do involve multiple other unions for other parts of the operation. So I'm only making comment with respect to what our inspector members have raised with us.
And with regard to, say, resolving workplace disputes when a member comes to, to the union, what are the common forums that you would use to resolve those disputes?
Well, the most common forum that, that we have, and the best one, is when it's raised and dealt with by the people, the workers themselves onsite, whether that's the individual worker who's raised it and they've just got advice from the union office, or whether that's with the assistance of a shop floor delegate going either to the relevant management or the HR in relation to that. That is not, that's broken down in this instance. And that's part of the issues that I think that we're facing, that the inspectors are facing. The second most common forum in relation to that will then be the Fair Work Commission, potentially under the bullying jurisdiction, but it could be for breach of an award or breach of an agreement. Sometimes these things then go to the federal court if we're talking about more serious general protections breaches or the magistrate's court with respect to underpayments and whatnot. But the most common one would be the Fair Work Commission. But there's potential here, I think, for issues in relation to state occupational health and safety law as well.
So parliamentary inquiry wouldn't be the usual forum. So what would you hope is the outcome by your evidence today?
Yeah, I don't know. I think that there is a value, just broadly and generally, sharing the experiences of our members and the concerns that they've raised. And I think that that makes for better public policymaking just generally because people who are on the front lines of a particular job have insights that I think should be taken into account. So we're doing this for its own benefit. I think the second thing is we have no expectation that a parliamentary inquiry is going to fix this particular issue one way or another. The RSPCA New South Wales CEO has reached out to us about an independent investigator. We're hoping that that will conclude, but that might have happened parallel or independent of this anyway. But I think that the area that I would urge the committee to focus on is that it is effective relationships of cooperation where resourced sufficiently that get the job done. And I would have concerns that if the committee just focused on the level of funding or the recent increase in funding to the RSPCA, that could be weaponised internally amongst the inspectorate and with the RSPCA about if the funding withdraws, who stays, who goes, and everything else. I think the key is to focus on the structural factor here, which is the leadership, the quality of the leadership, and what supports and accountabilities and processes need to be in place in order to maximise good quality leadership because that will ultimately result in better outcomes for animal welfare.
And I just have one more question with regard to the, say, bully, yeah, the bullying and grievance policy. Do you feel, in terms of your members, that it is an adequate policy? Or should it be, what needs to be reviewed in that policy in terms of RSPCA?
Yeah, I think the first thing that I, I would say, the first barrier I've encountered is that there seems to have been a level of reticence from the operational leadership of the RSPCA to engage properly its staff and their union representatives in fixing the issue. We did get a reply from our early April correspondence to the RSPCA about, you know, these are serious issues, it needs to be investigated, meet and discuss with us or we will ultimately end up in the Fair Work Commission. We're basically just told to go to the commission. So I think policies are great and important, but ultimately, unless there is an appropriate leadership culture, it doesn't really matter what a policy says because a policy can be, it can be weaponised, it can just be a tool of not letting people speak up properly as well. And that's, that's a real issue. So for me, while bullying, harassment, and nepotism are an issue there, the policy needs to be reviewed once the leadership culture is sorted out. And I think that if you, if you go policy first, it's not going to have any real impact.
Can I just pick up on some of your comments there? You spoke about correspondence that you had with RSPCA in April where they basically said, well, see you in fair work. Has it progressed any further from that in terms of conversations or discussions in a positive or negative way?
I mean, I would say that there's been some minor positive improvement since then in the sense that the RSPCA have reached out to us. They've asked our opinion in terms of where to go around an independent investigation. I've provided that and urged them to also find, go talk to other people and find other recommendations themselves. But there's a lot of unanswered questions that I have followed up with and am still waiting responses around potential terms of reference, are there independent investigators? The ask that we had in relation to managerial training as well. So I would class it as a step forward, but there is a lot of steps that still need to be taken.
And just, how long have you been waiting for those, for response for those extra things? You just rattled off?
Well, initially, we were waiting for over a month, which is not uncommon in these sorts of circumstances as well. And now we've been waiting, I think, my last correspondence, I said sometime last week. I can't remember the particular data off the top of, off the top of my head. I got a reply to that, but it didn't answer the specific questions that I put and I restated those questions. So probably been in the next phase since last work week. It's probably incumbent upon me in terms of giving the RSPCA management time about another week and then we'll have to review the phase that we're in.
And just to pick up on your comments about the not wanting, not wanting this inquiry to focus solely on the money. Some of that money, some of that money though was to provide a safer workplace for your, the people that you represent in terms of inspectors going too out. There are concerns that maybe that money isn't being spent for that purpose. Has, has that come through from your, your members?
I've had correspondence from our members that there's some concerns around some spending in relation to infrastructure upgrades and vehicle capacity upgrades at the RSPCA that has not come with, as far as they are aware, additional training in order to make the most of that. And they feel not necessarily related to the core mission in terms of animal welfare. So there are some concerns there. And, and don't get me wrong, the money is important. So if I've given the impression that the additional funding itself is, is not an issue or is not somehow important, I apologise for that. It isn't, the additional funding, of course, is an issue, is an issue for our members. It's important that it's done right and spent right. What I'm saying is that focusing only on the money without the structural, leadership, cultural issues that are at play is not going to get the overall result in terms of a better quality inspectorate, in terms of our members having a workplace environment where they can be all who they can be as inspectors. They need the right captain, they need the right coach in order to be able to do what they know they can do and provide the protection that they know they can provide.
Thank you. And just so you take it back to your members, assure them this inquiry is not just looking at money. It's, it's well and truly focused on the culture of, of the RSPCA as well. I might pass it to Ms. Oest.
Thank you. And thank you so much for coming to give evidence today. I know that my colleague has already asked about those several, seven formal complaints that you mentioned since January 2024. But I'm wondering, and I'm happy for you to take this on notice, if you don't have it available, how many complaints the union has received like from, like around the RSPCA inspectors in the last 12 months?
I don't have that beforehand, so I will need to take it on notice. As far as I'm aware, we didn't receive anything in the 12 months, in the period of time, that 12 months, until we got to this January period. I might be wrong on that, I'll need to double check and provide that. It's just based on my recollection. It's, it's really come up since the beginning of this year.
Okay, thank you. And I mean, has there been complaints in previous years that you know of? Or is something, or is this something that's really just kind of come to a head now as far as the union's concerned?
Look, no workplace is perfect and every workplace can be, can be better. And that's why, in my mind, the role of unions are critical even in, in good workplaces. Like, no footy team is perfect. Every footy team, even if they've won the premiership four times running, can be better. But this is new for us in terms of the RSPCA, the environment that we're in.
Based on what you've seen, what changes do you think need to be made to improve both the safety and job satisfaction for RSPCA inspectors? Like, what sort of recommendations do you think need to actually come out of this?
I don't know how you would frame these as recommendations, but I think what our members need is new leadership at an operational level in the RSPCA in New South Wales. And that's absolutely vital. That new leadership could involve the same people significantly changing their workplace practices and the way they operate from day to day. But it might also involve new people as well coming in or new roles coming in. But ultimately, it's got to get to that, that leadership level. I don't think it's incredibly complex in that regard. Good leadership makes for an effective agency. That's the issue that we're facing.
Thank you. And, you know, with that in mind, you know, what's the root cause of the problems here? Is it the structure? Is it the culture? Is it certain managers or is it a combination of all of those things really?
I think it's the way that the managerial team are producing a culture that's then flowing on to the rest of, the rest of the organisation. A good leader takes responsibility. An ineffective leader blames those that are under them. And we have real concerns that the events and, and well-documented public issues coming out of WOGA-WOGA are being pushed down onto the inspectors when really with a situation like that, when you're dealing with a matter from the beginning, as far as we are aware, that requires inter-agency cooperation, that requires good leadership, that requires adequately briefing people, having open communication, people being aware of things. Good leaders understanding what the role of their own agency is, what the remit of their own agency is, and not seeking to necessarily go beyond that, but working as part of a team with other agencies in order to get the end job down and better protect animal welfare.
Thank you.
Mr. Fang or Ms. Boyd or looking at government?
I, well, I have, no, look, I'll hold until we hear our next lot of witnesses, I think.
Ms. Boyd, you got any questions?
No, I'm all right. Thank you.
Okay, well, is there anything else that you might like to add before we give you an early mark?
No, that's, that's everything I've got to add.
Okay, thank you. Well, thank you for your, your time. I think you may have taken one question on notice. So the secretary will be in touch in terms of timeframes in getting that back to us. But thank you for giving us some insight in terms of your members and their experiences with their employer. So it's much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Cheers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.
We'll break now till 1.30.
We will now break till 1.30.
1.30 and when the fun.
Welcome back to this afternoon's session into the inquiry into the charitable organisations with responsibility for POKTA. I now welcome back the RSPCA. Before we go to questions, we do just have to swear in two witnesses that haven't been sworn in previously and that's Mr Wilkie and Mr Myers. So we'll start with you, Mr Wilkie.
I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. And just for the record, your name and position title?
Troubkey, the Senior Government Relations Manager at RSPCA.
Thank you. Mr Myers?
Scott Myers, Chief Inspector for RSPCA New South Wales. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. Would you like to make an opening statement or you just want to go to questions?
I've got an opening statement.
Yeah, sure.
Good afternoon Chair and Honourable Members of the Committee.
You might want to bring your microphone a bit closer please.
Their voice activated, so they're just...
Gets me every time.
It's alright.
Thank you for the opportunity to appear before you again on behalf of RSPCA New South Wales as CEO. Today I'm joined by our General Manager of Regulation and Business Services, Mr Will Bearden, Chief Inspector Scott Myers, General Counsel Catherine Jurd and Senior Government Relations Manager Troy Wilkie. This second hearing was notably scheduled before we were due to respond to the questions taken on notice at our previous appearance or the dozens of supplementary questions we received from the committee. Since that first hearing, we've provided the committee with substantive responses to all questions totaling nearly 20,000 words. As the committee has already been advised, we wrote to the Minister for Agriculture, the Honourable Tara Moriarty, MLC shortly after the first hearing. She has endorsed our efforts to deliver greater transparency when reporting on the Prevention of Cruelty to Animals Act 1979 compliance and enforcement activities. Subsequently and in addition to our detailed responses, we have submitted our 34B reports for the last two financial years, the New South Wales Government Budget Submission and confidentially provided all inspectorate standard operating procedures to the committee. Furthermore, I am pleased to announce that our 34B reports for the last two financial years are now published on our website and accessible to the public. We will continue to publish them annually alongside our annual and financial reports. Today, I also wish to table our employee handbook which comprehensively addresses how workplace matters are handled within our organisation. It goes without saying that RSPCA New South Wales is deeply committed to transparency. While we do not claim to be perfect, we have robust governance and workplace management practices in place to ensure the highest standards of operation and accountability. Given the United Workers Union's appearance before us today, it is essential to address our interactions with the union and the matters that they have raised. RSPCA New South Wales employs approximately 560 staff. There have been relatively recent allegations made against RSPCA New South Wales senior management which have been investigated and outcomes provided to the staff who made them. We believe that forums more appropriate than an upper house inquiry exist to address workplace complaints. We note that the union and its members have elected not to use those forums. RSPCA New South Wales is committed to working with our staff to ensure their wellbeing in a difficult arena. As these repeated inquiries prove, there is nothing simple about animal welfare and we back our staff. In June 2023, RSPCA New South Wales received $20.5 million in New South Wales Government funding following the 2021 inquiry into the operation of the approved charitable organisations under the Prevention of Cruelty to Animals Act 1979 and its recommendations for the New South Wales Government to provide ongoing sustainable funding to our organisation. This recommendation was matched as a commitment by New South Wales Labour before the state election and we welcome their continued commitment to that pledge. We have acquitted the funding received in line with that inquiry's recommendations, including the operation of a 24/7 call centre and increasing our utilisation of a two-out operation procedure, among other measures that best protect the safety of our frontline workers and provide enforcement of the state's animal welfare laws in line with community expectation. The funding will be expended by June 30, 2024 and our ability to continue these practices relies on recurrent funding from the New South Wales Government. We look forward to answering any further questions you may have regarding our organisation's enforcement of the Prevention of Cruelty to Animals Act. And Mr Shell table that handbook as well?
Yep, sure. We'll just get one of the staff to come up and grab it off you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for that and obviously thank you for providing or being proactive in providing that information to us as well as the SAPs on a confidential nature. We appreciate that. I'm just looking for members to take questions. Mr Feng?
Thank you Chair. Welcome everyone, some for the second time in as many weeks. Mr Coleman, I'll start with you. I note your opening statement. Do you believe you have the support of all your staff, particularly the inspectorate staff, to remain as CEO of the organisation?
Well, that's a broad question, Mr Feng. I don't think any CEO could say for any organisation that they would be supported 100%, 100% by staff. I think that would be a naive comment to make.
Do you believe that you have the majority of staff supporting you to remain as CEO of the organisation?
I have full support by our board and I have support from staff.
You've confirmed that you have full support from the board?
Yes.
Okay. You noted, sorry, you said in your opening statement that you back your staff. Obviously, we were together last Thursday in the Brumby's Inquiry where you outlined the actions of your inspectorate staff in relation to the alleged illegal knackerie in Wagga Wagga. Mr Coleman, why didn't you advise this committee that it was actually your chief inspector who was managing the complaint?
The complaint about Wagga?
The complaint received from Racing New South Wales.
I don't think I was specifically asked.
Do we need to specifically ask every single aspect in relation to questions to get an honest and accurate response from you?
I answer the questions that were asked.
Okay. Were you aware that it was the chief inspector who received the information from Racing New South Wales in relation to the illegal knackerie in Wagga?
Yes.
Were you aware that it's the chief inspector who is responsible for ensuring that external agencies such as DPI are advised in relation to illegal knackeries such as the one in Wagga?
We have an MOU with the DPI and I was aware that our chief inspector had received information from Racing New South Wales.
Okay. I'm going to have to ask you to speak up and speak or bring the microphone closer because you're not very clear at the moment. Can you advise this committee who was responsible for advising DPI in relation to the illegal knackerie allegations that were passed to you by Racing New South Wales?
It could be any number of staff, Mr Feng.
So which staff in particular then would be responsible for doing that?
It could have been one of the inspectors, it could have been our deputy chief inspector, it could have been a team leader, it could have been our chief inspector, it could have been me.
So under that MOU, how would your inspectors have passed that information to DPI?
I'd have to take that on notice in terms of the specifics, but what I do know, Mr Feng, is that we're in regular contact with DPI on all matter of things. So I'm not sure that it's necessarily an MOU trigger in this case, but could have been picked up in any number of conversations with the DPI about a number of different issues outside of Wagga as well.
Okay. Mr Coleman, can you detail for me how you handle conflicts of interest within the organisation?
Well, it's picked up in our respected handbook, Respect That Work handbook, how conflicts of interest should be managed and in effect, the most simplistic way to deal with that is that they're declared.
Okay. And do you keep a register of declarations?
Yes.
Okay. And who keeps that?
Our executive administrator keeps, keeps logs of, sorry, for the board, any conflicts of interest that are disclosed, they are recorded.
Okay. And what about senior management?
I'd have to take that on notice in terms of the specifics, but what I do know, Mr Feng, is that we're in regular contact with DPI on all matter of things. So I'm not sure that it's necessarily an MOU trigger in this case, but could have been picked up in any number of conversations with the DPI about a number of different issues outside of Wagga as well.
Okay. Mr Coleman, can you detail for me how you handle conflicts of interest within the organisation?
Well, it's picked up in our respected handbook, Respect That Work handbook, how conflicts of interest should be managed and in effect, the most simplistic way to deal with that is that they're declared.
Okay. And do you keep a register of declarations?
Yes.
Okay. And who keeps that?
Our executive administrator keeps, keeps logs of, sorry, for the board, any conflicts of interest that are disclosed, they are recorded.
Okay. And what about senior management?
I'd have to take that on notice in terms of the specifics, but what I do know, Mr Feng, is that we're in regular contact with DPI on all matter of things. So I'm not sure that it's necessarily an MOU trigger in this case, but could have been picked up in any number of conversations with the DPI about a number of different issues outside of Wagga as well.
Okay. Mr Coleman, can you detail for me how you handle conflicts of interest within the organisation?
Well, it's picked up in our respected handbook, Respect That Work handbook, how conflicts of interest should be managed and in effect, the most simplistic way to deal with that is that they're declared.
Okay. And do you keep a register of declarations?
Yes.
Okay. And who keeps that?
Our executive administrator keeps, keeps logs of, sorry, for the board, any conflicts of interest that are disclosed, they are recorded.
Okay. And what about senior management?
I'd have to take that on notice in terms of the specifics, but what I do know, Mr Feng, is that we're in regular contact with DPI on all matter of things. So I'm not sure that it's necessarily an MOU trigger in this case, but could have been picked up in any number of conversations with the DPI about a number of different issues outside of Wagga as well.
Okay. Mr Coleman, can you detail for me how you handle conflicts of interest within the organisation?
Well, it's picked up in our respected handbook, Respect That Work handbook, how conflicts of interest should be managed and in effect, the most simplistic way to deal with that is that they're declared.
Okay. And do you keep a register of declarations?
Yes.
Okay. And who keeps that?
Our executive administrator keeps, keeps logs of, sorry, for the board, any conflicts of interest that are disclosed, they are recorded.
Okay. And what about senior management?
I'd have to take that on notice in terms of the specifics, but what I do know, Mr Feng, is that we're in regular contact with DPI on all matter of things. So I'm not sure that it's necessarily an MOU trigger in this case, but could have been picked up in any number of conversations with the DPI about a number of different issues outside of Wagga as well.
Okay. Mr Coleman, can you detail for me how you handle conflicts of interest within the organisation?
Well, it's picked up in our respected handbook, Respect That Work handbook, how conflicts of interest should be managed and in effect, the most simplistic way to deal with that is that they're declared.
Okay. And do you keep a register of declarations?
Yes.
Okay. And who keeps that?
Our executive administrator keeps, keeps logs of, sorry, for the board, any conflicts of interest that are disclosed, they are recorded.
Okay. And what about senior management?
I'd have to take that on notice in terms of the specifics, but what I do know, Mr Feng, is that we're in regular contact with DPI on all matter of things. So I'm not sure that it's necessarily an MOU trigger in this case, but could have been picked up in any number of conversations with the DPI about a number of different issues outside of Wagga as well.
Okay. Mr Coleman, can you detail for me how you handle conflicts of interest within the organisation?
Well, it's picked up in our respected handbook, Respect That Work handbook, how conflicts of interest should be managed and in effect, the most simplistic way to deal with that is that they're declared.
Okay. And do you keep a register of declarations?
Yes.
Okay. And who keeps that?
Our executive administrator keeps, keeps logs of, sorry, for the board, any conflicts of interest that are disclosed, they are recorded.
Okay. And what about senior management?
I'd have to take that on notice in terms of the specifics, but what I do know, Mr Feng, is that we're in regular contact with DPI on all matter of things. So I'm not sure that it's necessarily an MOU trigger in this case, but could have been picked up in any number of conversations with the DPI about a number of different issues outside of Wagga as well.
Okay. Mr Coleman, can you detail for me how you handle conflicts of interest within the organisation?
Well, it's picked up in our respected handbook, Respect That Work handbook, how conflicts of interest should be managed and in effect, the most simplistic way to deal with that is that they're declared.
Okay. And do you keep a register of declarations?
Yes.
Okay. And who keeps that?
Our executive administrator keeps, keeps logs of, sorry, for the board, any conflicts of interest that are disclosed, they are recorded.
Okay. And what about senior management?
I'd have to take that on notice in terms of the specifics, but what I do know, Mr Feng, is that we're in regular contact with DPI on all matter of things. So I'm not sure that it's necessarily an MOU trigger in this case, but could have been picked up in any number of conversations with the DPI about a number of different issues outside of Wagga as well.
Okay. Mr Coleman, can you detail for me how you handle conflicts of interest within the organisation?
Well, it's picked up in our respected handbook, Respect That Work handbook, how conflicts of interest should be managed and in effect, the most simplistic way to deal with that is that they're declared.
Okay. And do you keep a register of declarations?
Yes.
Okay. And who keeps that?
Our executive administrator keeps, keeps logs of, sorry, for the board, any conflicts of interest that are disclosed, they are recorded.
Okay. And what about senior management?
I'd have to take that on notice in terms of the specifics, but what I do know, Mr Feng, is that we're in regular contact with DPI on all matter of things. So I'm not sure that it's necessarily an MOU trigger in this case, but could have been picked up in any number of conversations with the DPI about a number of different issues outside of Wagga as well.
Okay. And do you keep a register of declarations?
Yes.
Okay. And who keeps that?
Our executive administrator keeps, keeps logs of, sorry, for the board, any conflicts of interest that are disclosed, they are recorded.
Okay. And what about senior management?
I'd have to take that on notice in terms of the specifics, but what I do know, Mr Feng, is that we're in regular contact with DPI on all matter of things. So I'm not sure that it's necessarily an MOU trigger in this case, but could have been picked up in any number of conversations with the DPI about a number of different issues outside of Wagga as well.
Okay. Mr Coleman, can you detail for me how you handle conflicts of interest within the organisation?
Well, it's picked up in our respected handbook, Respect That Work handbook, how conflicts of interest should be managed and in effect, the most simplistic way to deal with that is that they're declared.
Okay. And do you keep a register of declarations?
Yes.
Okay. And who keeps that?
Our executive administrator keeps, keeps logs of, sorry, for the board, any conflicts of interest that are disclosed, they are recorded.
Okay. And what about senior management?
I'd have to take that on notice in terms of the specifics, but what I do know, Mr Feng, is that we're in regular contact with DPI on all matter of things. So I'm not sure that it's necessarily an MOU trigger in this case, but could have been picked up in any number of conversations with the DPI about a number of different issues outside of Wagga as well.
Okay. And do you keep a register of declarations?
Yes.
Okay. And who keeps that?
Our executive administrator keeps, keeps logs of, sorry, for the board, any conflicts of interest that are disclosed, they are recorded.
Okay. And what about senior management?
I'd have to take that on notice in terms of the specifics, but what I do know, Mr Feng, is that we're in regular contact with DPI on all matter of things. So I'm not sure that it's necessarily an MOU trigger in this case, but could have been picked up in any number of conversations with the DPI about a number of different issues outside of Wagga as well.
Okay. And do you keep a register of declarations?
Yes.
Okay. And who keeps that?
Our executive administrator keeps, keeps logs of, sorry, for the board, any conflicts of interest that are disclosed, they are recorded.
Okay. And what about senior management?
I'd have to take that on notice in terms of the specifics, but what I do know, Mr Feng, is that we're in regular contact with DPI on all matter of things. So I'm not sure that it's necessarily an MOU trigger in this case, but could have been picked up in any number of conversations with the DPI about a number of different issues outside of Wagga as well.
Okay. And do you keep a register of declarations?
Yes.
Okay. And who keeps that?
Our executive administrator keeps, keeps logs of, sorry, for the board, any conflicts of interest that are disclosed, they are recorded.
Okay. And what about senior management?
I'd have to take that on notice in terms of the specifics, but what I do know, Mr Feng, is that we're in regular contact with DPI on all matter of things. So I'm not sure that it's necessarily an MOU trigger in this case, but could have been picked up in any number of conversations with the DPI about a number of different issues outside of Wagga as well.
Okay. And do you keep a register of declarations?
Yes.
Okay. And who keeps that?
Our executive administrator keeps, keeps logs of, sorry, for the board, any conflicts of interest that are disclosed, they are recorded.
Okay. And what about senior management?
I'd have to take that on notice in terms of the specifics, but what I do know, Mr Feng, is that we're in regular contact with DPI on all matter of things. So I'm not sure that it's necessarily an MOU trigger in this case, but could have been picked up in any number of conversations with the DPI about a number of different issues outside of Wagga as well.
Okay. And do you keep a register of declarations?
Yes.
Okay. And who keeps that?
Our executive administrator keeps, keeps logs of, sorry, for the board, any conflicts of interest that are disclosed, they are recorded.
Okay. And what about senior management?
I'd have to take that on notice in terms of the specifics, but what I do know, Mr Feng, is that we're in regular contact with DPI on all matter of things. So I'm not sure that it's necessarily an MOU trigger in this case, but could have been picked up in any number of conversations with the DPI about a number of different issues outside of Wagga as well.
Okay. And do you keep a register of declarations?
Yes.
Okay. And who keeps that?
Our executive administrator keeps, keeps logs of, sorry, for the board, any conflicts of interest that are disclosed, they are recorded.
Okay. And what about senior management?
I'd have to take that on notice in terms of the specifics, but what I do know, Mr Feng, is that we're in regular contact with DPI on all matter of things. So I'm not sure that it's necessarily an MOU trigger in this case, but could have been picked up in any number of conversations with the DPI about a number of different issues outside of Wagga as well.
Okay. And do you keep a register of declarations?
Yes.
Okay. And who keeps that?
Our executive administrator keeps, keeps logs of, sorry, for the board, any conflicts of interest that are disclosed, they are recorded.
Okay. And what about senior management?
I'd have to take that on notice in terms of the specifics, but what I do know, Mr Feng, is that we're in regular contact with DPI on all matter of things. So I'm not sure that it's necessarily an MOU trigger in this case, but could have been picked up in any number of conversations with the DPI about a number of different issues outside of Wagga as well.
Okay. And do you keep a register of declarations?
Yes.
Okay. And who keeps that?
Our executive administrator keeps, keeps logs of, sorry, for the board, any conflicts of interest that are disclosed, they are recorded.
Okay. And what about senior management?
I'd have to take that on notice in terms of the specifics, but what I do know, Mr Feng, is that we're in regular contact with DPI on all matter of things. So I'm not sure that it's necessarily an MOU trigger in this case, but could have been picked up in any number of conversations with the DPI about a number of different issues outside of Wagga as well.
Okay. And do you keep a register of declarations?
Yes.
Okay. And who keeps that?
Our executive administrator keeps, keeps logs of, sorry, for the board, any conflicts of interest that are disclosed, they are recorded.
Okay. And what about senior management?
I'd have to take that on notice in terms of the specifics, but what I do know, Mr Feng, is that we're in regular contact with DPI on all matter of things. So I'm not sure that it's necessarily an MOU trigger in this case, but could have been picked up in any number of conversations with the DPI about a number of different issues outside of Wagga as well.
Okay. And do you keep a register of declarations?
Yes.
Okay. And who keeps that?
Our executive administrator keeps, keeps logs of, sorry, for the board, any conflicts of interest that are disclosed, they are recorded.
Okay. And what about senior management?
I'd have to take that on notice in terms of the specifics, but what I do know, Mr Feng, is that we're in regular contact with DPI on all matter of things. So I'm not sure that it's necessarily an MOU trigger in this case, but could have been picked up in any number of conversations with the DPI about a number of different issues outside of Wagga as well.
Okay. And do you keep a register of declarations?
Yes.
Okay. And who keeps that?
Our executive administrator keeps, keeps logs of, sorry, for the board, any conflicts of interest that are disclosed, they are recorded.
Okay. And what about senior management?
I'd have to take that on notice in terms of the specifics, but what I do know, Mr Feng, is that we're in regular contact with DPI on all matter of things. So I'm not sure that it's necessarily an MOU trigger in this case, but could have been picked up in any number of conversations with the DPI about a number of different issues outside of Wagga as well.
Okay. And do you keep a register of declarations?
Yes.
Okay. And who keeps that?
Our executive administrator keeps, keeps logs of, sorry, for the board, any conflicts of interest that are disclosed, they are recorded.
Okay. And what about senior management?
I'd have to take that on notice in terms of the specifics, but what I do know, Mr Feng, is that we're in regular contact with DPI on all matter of things. So I'm not sure that it's necessarily an MOU trigger in this case, but could have been picked up in any number of conversations with the DPI about a number of different issues outside of Wagga as well.
Okay. And do you keep a register of declarations?
Yes.
Okay. And who keeps that?
Our executive administrator keeps, keeps logs of, sorry, for the board, any conflicts of interest that are disclosed, they are recorded.
Okay. And what about senior management?
I'd have to take that on notice in terms of the specifics, but what I do know, Mr Feng, is that we're in regular contact with DPI on all matter of things. So I'm not sure that it's necessarily an MOU trigger in this case, but could have been picked up in any number of conversations with the DPI about a number of different issues outside of Wagga as well.
Okay. And do you keep a register of declarations?
Yes.
Okay. And who keeps that?
Our executive administrator keeps, keeps logs of, sorry, for the board, any conflicts of interest that are disclosed, they are recorded.
Okay. And what about senior management?
I'd have to take that on notice in terms of the specifics, but what I do know, Mr Feng, is that we're in regular contact with DPI on all matter of things. I'd have to take that on notice.
Okay. Sorry, just taking a step back. Senior management have a method of declaring conflicts of interest. Obviously, you're part of that senior management group. How do you declare your conflicts of interest?
To staff or to the board?
Well, just in general, how do you record them? I imagine you have, at some point, you'd have to make a declaration of conflict of interest? No?
Particularly at board meetings, yes.
Okay. What about in relation to contracts?
What, what type of contract?
Any contract. Say, say you've got, say you've got a perceived or a direct conflict of interest that you are aware would materially be considered a conflict of interest, what would you do in relation to that?
I would declare that to our chairman.
Okay. And what about other senior management?
Well, I would expect that they would declare it to their direct report.
Okay, so if the chief inspector has a conflict of interest, would they declare that to you?
No, to their direct report.
Okay, and who is that?
Today, it is Mr Bearden.
Okay. Mr Bearden, have you received any conflict of interest declarations from the chief inspector?
Over which timeframe, Mr Feng?
Any timeframe.
None that I'm aware of, no.
None?
Not personal ones, no.
No, okay.
I am aware of some historical matters relating to adjustment of horses.
Yep.
And I'm happy to discuss that, but that was prior to me joining the society.
Okay. Mr Myers, we didn't see you at the last hearing, is that correct?
Which one?
The one for POKTA. No, no, the POKTA one. You were on leave. Um, you were at a horse show, were you not?
Correct.
You were, okay. You, you show horses, is that right?
Correct.
Okay. Quarter horses, I believe, or?
Absolutely, yeah.
Magnificent animals, aren't they?
They are.
They are. In fact, you're the president of that group, aren't you?
No, I'm not.
Aren't you? Were you the president of that group?
No, never been the president.
Never been the president.
Are you talking about the Australian Quarter Association?
The Holter Breeders Group of Australia.
Holter Breeders, which is a, which is a small club, correct.
Oh, okay. My apologies. I'm not very good with my horse breeds, you know, once they're shot in the ground, they all look the same to me, but. So you are the president of the Holter Breeders Group of Australia, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Mr Coleman, recently, the RSPCA had a number of contracts that they let out. One was for horse floats, is that correct?
I believe so.
Did you order some horse floats?
Me personally?
The RSPCA?
No, Mr Coleman, the RSPCA, I think you know where I'm going with this. Please don't be, like, we are beyond, we are now beyond this-
Order, Mr Feng. He was asking that, I appreciate where you're going with your comments, but I don't think it's helpful.
Well, I just, I mean, I, I think it's pretty clear with my questioning where I'm going with this. Did the RSPCA purchase horse floats recently?
I believe so.
Okay. Can I ask which company you got to supply those to you?
I'd have to take that on notice. I don't know.
Okay. Mr Bearden, do you know?
No, I don't. I'd take it on notice.
You don't know the company that you ordered the horse floats from?
No, not off the top of my head, no.
Mr Myers, do you know?
I do.
Could you let me know the name of the company, please?
Karaka.
Karaka. Okay. And the Holter Breeders Association of, or Group of Australia, they have a sponsor, don't they?
No, they don't. So the committee you're referring to was really, was recently reformed after being sitting idle in a caretaking mode of which I was the president since prior to Covid.
Okay.
The show doesn't run as a show.
Okay. Does a group that you are involved with receive sponsorship from Karaka?
No. So the show you're referring, or the group you're referring to, I think five and a half years ago, received paid sponsorship from Karaka as a trade sponsor to compete at that show.
Okay. So the group that you are involved with now has no financial links, no, does not receive any funding?
Absolutely.
No, okay. We'll explore that a little bit later. At the show, were you there by yourself, or did you have other members of the RSPCA with you?
If you're talking about the Holter Breeders Show, which was like 2019?
I'm actually referring to the, the show that you were at where I wondered why you weren't here, which would have been about three or four weeks-
While you were on leave to attend the show. Yeah, so that was the Paint Horse National Show, which was in April. I was on leave.
Yep.
I was there with my wife showing our horse.
Okay. Was there any other members from the RSPCA at the same show?
I don't believe so, no.
You don't believe so?
No.
Okay. Was the deputy chief inspector there at all?
No.
No. Are you sure?
I'm 100% confident she wasn't there.
Okay. Excellent. Mr Myers, could you talk to me a little bit about the Safe Work Improvement Notices that have been received by the organisation? How many of them relate to training of your inspectorate?
I believe one.
And what's that relate to?
It was defence tactics, patents and handcuffs.
Okay. When did you receive that from Safe Work?
I'd have to, the exact date I don't have unless it's in our bundle.
Okay.
We already answered a few questions on this in our supplementary answers, so I might also shed some light for you, Mr Feng.
Yes, well, I, well, actually, I've got some questions for you in a second, Mr Wilkie, but I'll just stay with Mr Myers for the moment if I could. Mr Myers, you've got some Safe Work Improvement Notices, obviously, in relation to training, but what have you got in relation to bullying and harassment complaints from Safe Work? Anything at all?
In the improvement notices?
Sorry, we're still on the Safe Work Notices, or have we moved on from that?
Well, I'm just seeing if there's anything in relation to the Safe Work Notices that are in relation to bullying and workplace harassment.
In the last 12 months, we received two Safe Work Improvement Notices. They were both detailed in our supplementary answers, which I can go through now if you really like. One was issued for a matter including workers and others may be exposed to risks or injury or illness from workplace violence due to inadequate identification of psychological risks, and the other one was due to workers or others may be exposed to risks of injury or illness from workplace violence due to business law ensuring the implementation and utilisation of identified control measures. So those are the two that we got?
Right.
And they're detailed in the answers we provided.
Yes. So Mr Myers just indicated there's only one in relation to the inspectorate. There would seem to be two.
Well, he said that there was one in relation to training. That's why I'm clarifying. We've got written answers here that outline the two, which we've given answers on, and I can read those answers out again for you if you like, or?
The reason that I'm asking, no, no, the reason that I'm asking the question is that it seems to me that the organisation itself seems to be a little bit unclear as to what the Safe Work Notices relate to and the improvements that are required in relation to that. Now, the chief inspector is certainly somebody who is responsible for ensuring that those Safe Work Notices are implemented, and yet, when I asked the question, it was indicated to me that there was only one Safe Work Notice that related to the training issues and the inspectorate staff. It seems to be that there's two. Would that be a more accurate response, Mr Wilkie?
We provided in writing an answer that outlines two Safe Work Notices, which you've been provided.
It's an issue in relation to the way that it's written. I'm asking what your staff know and understand in relation to those. And it seems to me that the chief inspector doesn't actually understand what those Safe Work Notices relate to.
Sorry, the phrasing of your question outlined towards, like, notices relating to training, to which I believe he gave an accurate answer.
Right. Mr Wilkie, how many government relations people work for the RSPCA?
One, me.
One. So your title is Senior Government Relations Manager?
Correct.
That would indicate there's more than one person.
Not necessarily.
Okay, so what does a senior relate to?
It could indicate a number of things. It's just saying that I've got a senior role. So senior manager is a title used across the organisation for those who are at a certain level, and that's where I'm at. I don't have any staff that work for me.
I'm happy to hand over for a moment, Chair. I'll come back later.
Can I just ask some questions around the adjustment of the horses issue? Start with you, Mr Myers, and feel free, Mr Coleman, or anyone else that wants to jump in. In, in response to supplementary questions, you said that obviously you adjusted these horses on your sister-in-law's property, obviously during the drought, 2016 to 2020, 32 horses were adjusted. Assuming when you say your sister-in-law, is that your brother, brother's wife?
Correct.
Yes, okay. So 32 horses were adjusted at $10 to $15 per day per, per horse?
32, 32 in totality.
In totality. Were these paddock adjusted, were they fed two or three times a day? I'm assuming it's during the drought.
Yeah, I believe there was feed supplied as well.
Feed supplied as well for $15 per day?
Correct.
During the drought?
Yep.
That's a pretty generous sister-in-law. Given that the prices of adjustment during that period would have been fairly exorbitant, and I'd even know how she would have covered her costs at even $10 to $15 per day. What happened with those horses after RSPCA were finished with them in terms of prosecution and holding them?
Yep, I think there was one euthanised by a vet after it suffered colic. There were three or four that were returned back to the owner after the court proceedings had finalised. There were horses that were adopted by my sister-in-law, and then the account credited, paperwork supplied, so every horse was accounted for.
Okay. Because the answer given says that no horses have ever been purchased, adopted, transferred or sold to your sister-in-law, but then you just told me then that you had only five or several were adopted?
There were a number of that were adopted through that process, but they were mainly from people local to the area that they would be able, they were able to find homes for, and they did it as, as an agent for us, in effect.
Okay, so the answer in supplementaries was incorrect in saying that none were adopted to your sister-in-law?
She didn't adopt them. She processed the adoption to an external partner, a third party.
All right. And so was there a payment or fee received for those adoptions?
Yes, and the invoices were her next invoice that she would send in, I believe, were credited. I never approve the invoices.
Okay. I'm just trying to get my head around the process in terms of how you manage that conflict of interest and not being part of it.
I wasn't part of the process.
Okay, and, all right, so so she, she sends in an invoice. Was it, so there was periodically invoices in terms of, okay, for, this is the adjustment fee for this month, this is the adjustment fee for this month, and then the last, the last invoice, obviously, when they were getting rid of the animal, that was like a, I'm trying to, I'm trying to understand how, what did that invoice look like in terms of?
My apologies. Would it assist if we took that on notice? Because Scott wasn't part of any process.
Yeah, yeah, appreciate. That's why I said if anyone else wants to chime in on the process.
It's typically done on a monthly basis.
Yep.
But we can, we can find that out.
Okay, thank you. Ms Hurst, did you want to?
Sure, I'll just jump in. I've got a few questions in regards to the questions on notice that were put from the last hearing. If I could just follow, I don't know who's the best person to answer on those. But I note that the answers to questions on notice stated that the chief inspector, Scott Myers, is studying to get an MBA. I'm just wondering if the RSPCA is paying for all or any part of this qualification?
RSPCA hasn't paid for anything.
Okay, so you're paying for it yourself. Okay, thank you. In regards to the supplementary question regarding $105,000 given to the RSPCA to establish the Lithgow Horse Care and Rehabilitation Centre, we asked when we could expect to see this centre built and operational. The answer given said that the funding was being prioritised accordingly. Could I go back to the original question about when we could expect to see this centre built and operational and get some information and specifics around that, please?
I can answer that, Deputy Chair. So it's part of the Office of Local Government Capital Grant that we received, $10.5 million of funding two years ago, and it's one of around about 20-odd, I can't be exactly sure of the number anymore, capital programmes that we've got in play. We've had contractors out on the site. There is a water course running through it, and it's been a bit boggy and what have of late, but the works involve some fencing in particular. It's a very difficult site in that half of it's inaccessible, probably more than half of it's inaccessible. But there's a small area for adjustment of horses on the surveyor, but I would, I would probably guess that it's around about somewhere between 10 and 15 acres of land that we could put some horses on. The whole, the whole site's much, much larger. But maybe, maybe that, that many or a few more acres where we could put horses on, and we intend to have contractors on there in the near future.
So there's no timeline going forward for when the centre could be built or operational?
I'd expect it to be done in the next six to 12 months. So if I can just reiterate, the works that we would put there with the funding is some fencing, some perimeter fencing.
So that's been done already?
No, no, it hasn't, but there's been some, there's been some clearing of some blackberry bushes around the site, and then we would put a light structure, some sort of shed and water facility for the horses.
Okay. And so how long has it been since the money was actually received to where we are now?
About two years, and I think we've got about $3 million of that original grant still to acquit, but we've got works underway at various sites.
Okay. So, so the work that you mentioned was the clearing of?
Blackberry?
Blackberry?
Yeah, it's just a-
And that's all that's happened so far in those two years?
That's right.
Okay. But you expect that it will be all completed in six to 12 months?
I'd like to see it finished by then, certainly.
Thank you. Another question that I had on notice was in regards to the Kim Hollingsworth prosecutions and what actually ended up happening to the horses seized from her, whether they were rehomed, euthanised, or still in the care of the RSPCA. The RSPCA declined to answer that, and I'm just wondering if you could explain to the committee why?
Well, I indicated that the prosecutions didn't take place in the current inquiry's timeframe, and that to access records, some of those prosecutions are now 10 or 12 or possibly more years older. I don't have those files on site, and so to retrieve them from storage was going to, in a fulsome way, answer your question, take longer than the two weeks available to us. That was the reasoning for the friend of mine.
Just in regards to the terms of reference, there's nothing actually in the terms of reference, so that part A of the terms of reference matters contained in the annual reports, including the financial statements, but then point B and C is just the exercise of the approved charitable organisations of their compliance and enforcement functions under POKTA and any other related matters. So they're not actually limited in the timeline that we could ask questions for. This is a more general inquiry. I believe that that's the committee's understanding into the RSPCA, rather than limited to what's happened in the last 12 months.
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. I suppose I took my guide from the heading of the Inquiry 2023 Inquiry. I appreciate it has a broad remit, but by the same token, the two weeks with which we had to, these were 13 prosecutions and hundreds of horses. Some were ordered back to her in the early prosecutions and were re-seized by us, I think, twice. I can say there are no Hollingsworth horses still in the RSPCA's custody any longer, but as to what happened with every individual horse to acquit, that would take an extraordinary amount of time across those 13 prosecutions.
I understand, obviously, that, you know, two weeks might be limited. I understand you've got limited resources. But could I ask that you could go back and have a look and try and get as much information as you possibly can for the benefit of the committee, given, given it's something that has come up in this committee quite a lot? Thank you. Thank you. I might go into, so did you have something you wanted to share?
Yeah, you could have mine. I'll ask a few. Thank you. And good afternoon to all of you. Can I just ask, is there a policy for the RSPCA to ask exiting employees to sign non-disclosure agreements?
Occasionally, there, there might be occasion where that does occur. There might be a negotiated outcome, for example, on somebody leaving. Yeah, so that, that's the sort of situation where that might occur.
So in those circumstances, does the NDA cover just the circumstances around them leaving? Or does it, is it broader and stops them being able to talk about any part of their experience?
It's typically contained within the, the subject matter. Might be, it might be, for example, the nature of the parting of ways. But it'd certainly be limited to that. It wouldn't, it's typically not a catch-all for everything.
Are you able to tell us how many NDAs have been signed with exiting employees, whether terminated or resigning or?
I'll take it on notice so I get you a, an accurate answer, but it's not many. It, it would be a handful.
Okay, if you could maybe let us know sort of over a particular time period as well, so maybe just each financial year. That would be really helpful.
How far, sorry, just to help the, help the RSPCA, how far back do you want them to go?
Oh, right, not, no, not, not, that's a very good point. I don't want you to keep going. So if we could just have the last four years.
Four years, no problem.
Thank you. We heard from the UWU representative earlier about these seven allegations from January twenty-four. Just wondering if you know the answer to whether those seven allegations were from seven separate people? Or were they from fewer than seven?
I'm, I'm happy to answer that. No, we're not, we're not aware. I think I gave some statistics or some data last time we were here and we've given some written answers as well. But we've got one matter on foot with the UWU that, that your previous witness alluded to today. And whilst, he said in his correspondence to us that there's been seven allegations of bullying, we're not sure whether that's from one person or more. Yeah, and so no, no further information's been forthcoming from the union on that.
Yeah, okay. I think I saw something in your supplementary answers as well that referred to that seven.
Sorry, just picking up on that. So you've, you haven't actually received any formal details of these allegations?
Excuse me. There were a number of allegations against a couple of various staff members put by a small group of people. Again, I'd just have to refer to my notes. I'll come to it in a moment. Actually, if you give me a moment, I'll tell you. Just repeat from the first inquiry. We had twenty-three grievances in total and eleven of those were informal. Of the twelve remaining grievances, all were bullying allegations. And there were multiple allegations of bullying. There were thirty-six individual instances, allegations of bullying. Of the thirty-six, four were substantiated and thirty-two were unsubstantiated.
Okay, so the seven that the UW is referring to, are they contained within those thirty-six?
I presume so because we don't have any current matters on foot. We don't have any bullying or other matters.
They haven't given you the details of those seven?
That's correct.
To cross-reference as to?
That's right.
Okay.
There's actually, there is a bit in the answers to questions on notice in relation to this. I think it's question number nineteen.
Do you have a page number for me, Miss?
Page ten.
Page nine.
Yeah, page nine to ten. So in here, we talk about, so there's a bit of a period of time between, but the UWU, according to your answers, emailed regarding these seven allegations, but then you say at the end there that there's not any sort of additional detail provided. But then it says all allegations are investigated. But that's talking about twenty-nine allegations. So, yeah, is they? So, so we think that the seven are within the twenty-nine?
I, I assume so. We just haven't heard from the union or anyone else. And I should say we do have a formal grievance procedure in, in place, so you know, if, if there's further grievances, they could follow that, those channels rather than through the union. I think, I think the union gave in evidence that the best place to resolve issues is between the people involved. And that's the culture that we like to foster in the organisation. It's much better than going through third parties.
Can I ask what, I guess what's in place? I've, I've got the code of conduct in front of me that I've taken off of the website today. But what's in place, I guess, to ensure that not just that employees are disclosing or that executives are disclosing their potential other work and conflicts of interest? But are there any sort of rules in place in relation to associations between people within the RSPCA and the people that they may be inspecting or investigating? What's in place to ensure?
We've certainly got the, we've got a conflict of interest policy that's contained within the code of conduct. There's also an essential term in employment contracts around disclosures of conflicts of interest. We've got a related parties policy as well, if there's any, any conflict there. And then we've got a grievance procedure that people, if they, if they believe someone's got a conflict or they can always do it through that. Or a whistleblower policy, which also we have, that whistleblower policy provides a third independent party to contact. So, and that's in our policy. That's in the code of conduct.
Who's the independent party? Is it a?
If you give me a moment, I'll find it.
I believe it's BDO.
BDO, that's correct.
The company.
Yep, that's a third-party company that provides, that deals with whistleblower.
And so have any of the complaints that you're aware of related to potential, potential conflicts of interest or allegations of unethical conduct or potential unethical conduct because of a person's association with people within the industries that the RSPCA would be commonly investigating?
Yes. Sorry, was it, can you repeat the question?
Have you received any complaints in relation?
Yes, not necessarily complaint, but something's come to my attention that, that might fall within that gamut, if you like. And, and we've discussed that at, at a senior level.
And then, I guess, how is that dealt with?
Well, we, we put those allegations to the individual concerned and gave them a right of reply because we like to follow procedural fairness.
And, and then what?
So we formed a view about the matter and continue to have a view. At the end of the day, it depends whether or not they, they're directly related to RSPCA or they're, they're related to a private individual's, you know, what they do in their private time. If it's in their private time, there's a bit of a line that we need to be careful about how far we go with that. If it might bring RSPCA into disrepute, for example, it's something that certainly we, we've discussed and we have discussed it with the individual concerned. But outside of that, we haven't gone any further with the matter.
No, so there's, so when a, when something like that is identified, there's then sort of a management process put in place to manage?
Correct.
Around that. But I guess, yeah, there's nothing to sort of, unlike the rules in relation to not taking on, you know, other work without getting approval, et cetera, there's nothing to stop a person from having those associations that could be seen as potentially at odds with the purpose of the RSPCA.
That's right. I don't think that's uncommon in, in many industries, certainly within ours. What we've got in place are a series of policies and procedures to deal with those. And, and where it falls outside of that, like the case I've alluded to without being specific, and I don't want to be specific because of privacy issues and privilege issues, we've certainly got those mechanisms in place.
Well, can I, sorry, can I just? Mr Bearden, can I suggest that I'd like you to be a little bit more specific in relation to this because I suspect that the issue that you're talking about is the same issue that this committee is already aware of and I'm about to address it. But in relation to that, I want to know how you managed it before I address the issue. So can you be a little bit more specific in the way that it was declared to you, how it was recorded? How the senior management and the board were made aware of the issue? And what steps the RSPCA took to manage that issue? Knowing that I probably already know what you know.
Mr Fang, I don't know if it's the same issue, so I think we need to exercise a level of caution.
Sure.
But in terms of process, if somebody comes to us with an allegation and, as I said, it may bring the RSPCA into disrepute, or there may be a fundamental conflict of interest. And that involves a private matter external to the RSPCA. Then, as is the case, General Counsel and I had a, a meeting with the person concerned.
Okay, and what was the result of that meeting?
Well, the result was that the, the individual gave us an answer. We formed an opinion about what should next steps maybe be, but at the end of the day, they're our opinions. They're not, you know, that's not, it's for the individual concerned to determine what they do.
Did you?
In their private lives.
Advised the CEO and in turn did the CEO advise the board of this issue?
I can't remember.
You can't remember?
No, I can't.
Can we be clear about what the issue?
Yeah, it's like.
Well, I'm, no, I'm just, I'm, I'm just keen to see, look, I'm, I'm going to raise an issue very shortly. I'm just, we're, we're now, we're still in the realms of hypotheticals and that's fine. What I want to do is understand in relation to this matter, how it was handled before I address some of the concerns I have around another matter. It's probably the same matter.
I'm not sure if we're aware of the same, sorry to interrupt, Mr Fang, but I'm not sure if we're aware of what this matter is because we haven't said what this matter is. So if you're saying, I'm asking a specific question on this matter, I'm, I don't know, I'm pretty lost on this line of questioning on what we're really talking about, whether it's a hypothetical or a particular matter.
It's not a matter if you're lost or not. I think Mr Bearden and I understand each other. I'm asking in relation to the matter that he raised in how handle conflicts of interest are handled, I'm asking Mr Bearden what he did in relation to that. Now, he has said that he had brought the person in and senior counsel and he had a conversation. I'm now asking, if it was serious enough to bring somebody in and have a conversation about that matter, did you make the CEO aware and did the CEO then in turn make the board aware?
And you took it on notice?
I'll, I'll take it on notice if I can. I'm, I'm talking about, just to be clear, I'm not talking about a hypothetical. I'm talking about an actual event.
I know.
And, and I'm describing, I've answered your question. I've said this is the, that's the process that we've undertook.
Okay. So. So, so obviously you, you didn't feel that there was a reputational issue for the RSPCA? In your, in your, in this example that you've given us?
Yes, I did, and that's why we had the meeting. I think I stated that in my answer.
Okay, and so what actions came out of that?
Again, we formed a view about it and it, it was, it's a private matter concerning a particular individual and it's up to them to make steps outside of the, outside of.
Is it though? Is it, is it, is it up to?
On what basis would I, would I make somebody or force somebody to do something, Mr Fang?
Okay, let me, let me put a, a scenario to you then, before I go to specifics. If somebody in your organisation has a external friendship or relationship with somebody and that person is then investigated by the RSPCA, is there a way for that to be declared? Is there a way for it to be recorded? Do you advise the CEO and does the CEO then advise the board?
Well, it's a hypothetical question. I'd rather not answer hypothetical questions.
Well, okay, I'm asking you the question. If some, if, if there was a conflict of interest where one of your inspectors was tasked with a job where one of your, that they had a relationship with somebody, how would they declare that conflict of interest?
Well, there's a number of mechanisms, as I've alluded to before. There's a conflict of interest policy. There's, there's a requirement in their employment contract to do that in writing. That's the requirement. That's what it says. So they would make us aware of the conflict.
Okay.
Before we go too far down this road, I'm just trying to say, Mr Primrose has waited a couple of goes for a question.
Oh, I'm delighted to listen into the
It's fascinating, isn't it?
Debate, yes. Yeah, I'm watching a game of chess. Can I ask whoever is appropriate and would like to answer, just, just two basic questions if I can. As an approved charitable organisation under POKTA, are you, with respect to your statutory enforcement activities, are you subject to the GIPA Act?
Yes, we are.
Okay. Are there any parts of your organisation that aren't, and your activities that aren't subject to the GIPA Act?
Only the inspectorate is GIPA susceptible.
Okay. What other aspects of your statutory enforcement activities under GIPA may not be subject to the GIPA Act?
Oh, I'm sorry. I misunderstood you. I thought you were asking about non-inspectorate-related RSPCA activity, of which there's a lot. All of the enforcement activity pursuant to POKTA, its regulations and the associated codes would be GIPA susceptible.
I, I can't hear you, sorry.
All of the enforcement activity pursuant to the Prevention of Cruelty to Animals Act, the regulations, the various animal welfare codes, all of that would be GIPA susceptible.
How many GIPA applications have been received, and please feel free to take this on notice, in the last four years?
In the last, I will have to take the last four years on notice. We publish a register that discloses the outcome of the GIPA applications on our website. There's a GIPA officer allocated to incoming inquiries and ordinary quasi, but essentially government, protocol is undertaken with respect to those applications. There are, in addition, a number of informal GIPA applications made generally by persons of interest who seek access to their own personal information, which are not, you know, processed formally because that's the statutory mechanism and we attempt to give people, obviously, access to their own personal information where we can, subject to appropriate statutory restrictions like public interest immunity and things of that nature.
Thank you. And if you could take that?
The four years, I will.
Thank you. My other query is in relation to the conduct that relates to the exercise of your functions under POKTA. Is there any, has there been any role for the New South Wales Ombudsman in reviewing those?
Not historically. There was one complaint that the Ombudsman, I believe, undertook an investigation, albeit to my, to my mind, potentially without jurisdiction. But nonetheless, we participated, we provided documents as required, responded to the questions that the Office of the Ombudsman forwarded us. And I've actually never received an outcome. I can only assume the Ombudsman's office followed its own process. At the moment, we are not susceptible to the Ombudsman because there's not the relevant provision that would make that happen, but I understand there's a plan to remedy that. It was an aspect of the twenty-twenty-two Animal Welfare Bill and I understand that those efforts towards transparency are underway.
Thank you, thank you.
Before I throw back to Mr Fang, I might just ask a couple more questions. Just back on the adjustment issue, are there any other inspectorate staff adjusting horses on behalf of the RSPCA?
Not to my knowledge.
Can I go to a concern that's been raised, and it probably goes to Mr Fang's line of questioning as well? Mr Myers, do you have any relationship with a person by the name of Suzette Turner?
No relationship at all.
Okay.
I know who that person is.
Yeah. Is she well-known to the RSPCA, would you say? Would that be a good description? Or well-known to the inspectorate?
Yes.
Known for a good reason or a bad reason?
We've received multiple complaints in relation to dog breeding activities.
Yeah, in terms of, would you say in line with puppy farming?
Correct.
For want of a better, we don't have an accurate definition of what puppy farming is.
I was setting a long run up here and then you've just gone and just.
I'm just, I'm just straight to the point. And have those investigations borne fruit at all?
I'm not aware of the outcomes of them, but I could, yeah, could take that on notice.
As the Chief Inspector, you're not aware of any?
I'm not across every single complaint we receive. Normally, if a matter is referred to a formal caution, penalty infringement notice or a prosecution, or if an inspector's seeking advice, we will have those conversations, but I'm not across every job, no.
Has, has any action come to you, or request for inspectorate action come to you for approval regarding Miss Turner and you've knocked it back?
For prosecution, no.
No? On what grounds would you knock that, a prosecution, just more generally speaking? And maybe this is to Miss Jurd, do you have a set of guidelines that you could provide the committee in terms of like, what, what reaches a point where you can, you think you can successfully prosecute?
I think we've provided them previously, possibly not to this committee, but we can re-provide them.
There's been a few committees.
Yep. The, an inspector has carriage of a matter with the supervision of their team leader. If they determine that, and I think I've previously given the committee access to a kind of enforcement hierarchy that exists in a kind of pyramid, at the bottom of which is kind of education efforts, provision of, you know, potentially food or veterinary product at cost or for free. I know of inspectors who drive people with their animals to veterinary clinics, make the appointment for them. That's kind of in that low end of education, attempting to achieve compliance with either the Prevention of Cruelty to Animals Act regs or Code. So that's the low end. Then you've got kind of 24N written directions. So that is, the inspector's fairly confident they can establish a breach of POCTA, but they want to give the person the benefit of effectively, effectively an improvement notice, like pull your socks up. A statutory enforceable one, that is, if you don't do it, the court could intervene. Thereafter, there are official cautions pursuant to the Fines Act that the Chief Inspector is authorised to approve. Penalty infringement notices that also go through the process of essentially a mini brief production because if they're court elected, we have to be in a position to prosecute that to the criminal standard. And thereafter, court attendance notices can be issued. If an inspector kind of is unsure which discretionary route to take, that is, they're aware that they could probably substantiate a breach, but they're not entirely certain what to do. They've got access to their team leaders who can assist in the exercise of that discretion. They have access to our brief checker, a person by the name of Trevor Osborne, who has been employed by the RSPCA for, I think, 15 years. If Trevor considers the matter requires additional legal advice, then it comes to me and I will either provide that written legal advice, you know, commence proceedings or don't commence proceedings. I think we can establish charges, A, B, C. Or I think there is an alternative discretionary outcome available, in which case I will give that legal advice. It returns kind of back down the hierarchy and ultimately it's a determination made in respect of a recommendation given by Trevor to the Chief Inspector or his delegate if he's on leave in respect of which prosecutorial or enforcement outcome might be chosen. The RSPCA has adopted the DPP guidelines for, oh, I think at least 15 years. There's an independence policy with respect to the enforcement action taken by inspectors and there's an independence policy with respect to prosecutorial decision making by the solicitors employed or instructed by my office.
Okay. So is, I'll just, if I, just picking up, is it plausible then that an inspector will go through a process of wanting to prosecute someone and Mr. Myers, the Chief Inspector, will be totally unaware of that move to prosecute? As the Chief Inspector, does everything flow through you and then through to Miss Jurd or Mr. Osborne, it was Mr. Osborne?
Generally, yes, it goes through a process and it'll come for me to a final determination based on, based on a brief checkers report.
Okay, so to circle back to Miss Turner.
I think I know, Chair, the matter you're talking about, so, and I can give you some information on that, so.
How about I throw, throw it out there and then you, you may answer or you might, may not. So to circle back to Miss, Miss Turner, she's a renowned, obviously, breeder of dogs in, in the Shane's Park, was it Shane's Park area, I believe? There's been numerous complaints as you've outlined. You, my understanding is you oversee this breeder compliance unit, but you can't recall as to whether she's been brought forward for prosecution or attempts to be brought forward for prosecution.
I believe the last sort of inspections that the breeder's compliance unit did was they worked with her through issuing 24N directions to bring her up to compliant with the Breeder's Code of Practice.
Okay, and that's as far as your inspectorate activities have gone with her in terms of a 24N or has there been?
I, I have a recollection, there may have been a penalty infringement notice issued, but I'd have to take that on notice.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanted to just check on one of the answers, Mr. Myers, that you gave to the Chair. When you said you've got no relationship with Miss Turner, would you recognise each other on the street? Would she recognise you on the street?
Would she recognise me? I would have no idea.
Have you got her phone number in your phone?
Yes, I would have her phone number and I would have text messaging in relation to where she asked me how to get her dog back from a dog fighting syndicate in Queensland and I said you would need to make inquiries to Queensland. But in saying that, lots of people, I have lots of people's numbers in my phone.
Sure, as do I, I'm certainly not friends with all of them, but there's.
Would be the same with me.
But there's, yeah, how would she have got your number then to begin with?
I think there's a mutual connection I know through breeding horses. So some time ago, we had received some information, RSPCA had received some information in relation to an alleged animal cruelty matter. We were planning, operational planning of a search warrant. During that planning process, which was happening with, during the team, I had nothing to do with me, I had received some information from somebody who lives in another state about that operational planning. At that time, I discussed it with my deputy, who since left us. And the risk, obviously, from that being leaked somehow, we thought that was too big of a risk for our safety of our staff, so it was referred to another agency and we didn't continue with it.
Thank you, that's all for now.
Yeah, I'll pass back to Miss Savane or Miss McDonald.
Well, I've got plenty, but just want to, I'm going to keep going on this, this little topic because it does fascinate me a little bit. Mr. Myers, you've obviously got a number of horses that you, you show and do you breed horses as well?
I have some, yeah, I have some breeding horses, yes.
You breed, okay. What other animals do you own?
A chihuahua.
A chihuahua, okay. Do you have any other animals that you own?
My wife has about 18 chickens.
Okay, cool. The only dog you have though is a chihuahua, is that correct?
Correct, it's my daughter's dog.
Excellent. I mean, if you've got to live with a chihuahua, sure, but. I don't know, I'm not a dog person. So, in relation to, sorry?
We're all animal people.
No, well, that's handy. In relation to Miss Turner then, you've said that you came across her number again through an operation, is that correct?
No, I didn't say I'd come across her number.
Okay, how, how did you get her number? Was it through a mutual contact?
I believe she was provided with my number.
Okay.
Okay, about a dog that she had in Queensland.
Okay.
RSPCA Queensland did a raid, did a search warrant or whatever it was called, on a dog fighting property. It was quite well known through the media.
Yep.
And I believe she had a dog that was there.
Okay, right. So she has your number and she has been investigated by RSPCA inspectors?
New South Wales inspectors, correct.
Okay. Did they form a view in relation to what they saw at one of her properties? Did they want, did they seek to prosecute at all?
No.
No? Are you sure about that? Did anyone approach you to prosecute in relation to?
I have never seen a brief of evidence in relation to Suzette Turner.
Okay, did you indicate that you, you wouldn't support one or did you indicate that she should have animals returned to her?
Never.
Never to your, to your inspectorate staff?
No.
No.
And I, sorry, just to be clear, I've never received anything. I did a search of reports that I've received from the brief checker, I've never received anything.
Okay. Well, I'm sure we'll do a little bit more digging on that point a little bit later. We've heard a lot about issues of culture at the RSPCA. There's obviously the evidence that you would have heard from the union. And towards the end of that evidence, they indicated that part of the cultural problem seemed, cultural problems seem to accelerate at the appointment of the Deputy Chief Inspector. Did any of your inspectorate staff raise issues with any of you in relation to that?
I've, I've received a, in relation to the bullying allegations, Mr. Fang. So there were 29, of those 30, 34 allegations or so, 29 of them were in relation to the Deputy Chief Inspector.
Okay, now I think you said that there were four complaints that were upheld, is that correct?
Four in total, but three in relation to the Deputy Chief.
Okay, who did the investigations on those?
An experienced HR officer. So there's a process that we go through, so there's a grievance process. And someone, if they've got an allegation of bullying, they'll go to HR. HR will then schedule a meeting with them, they'll have the discussion about the allegations. They'll write minutes to that, to that meeting. And then they'll put that into a letter, confirm it, and then they'll put it to the person who's alleged to have conducted the bullying. We then go through a process of interview, so there's an experienced HR officer who goes through it. All of those individual allegations are put to the person. They've given a right of response and a decision or a determination, sorry, a recommendations made on the balance of probabilities as to the likelihood or otherwise of those individual allegations. That's what's occurred in this, in all of those instances. And on that basis, then it goes to the HR manager who will have a look at it, who will then sign off on it.
So the HR person that does the investigating, have they worked in external HR organisations before?
They've worked in HR and external organisations, yes, they've suitably qualified.
Have they worked for the RSPCA in any other, any other role prior to joining the HR?
No, not in relation to any of these allegations.
They were employed and brought in to the RSPCA to do investigative work in relation to bullying and harassment?
No, not of itself, they're a HR officer, but they've got a lot of experience, this particular individual does. I think they have a qualification in industrial relations. Certainly suitable experience, I've seen the work and the quality of the work. Having spent many years in that myself, it's good quality, it follows procedural fairness. You asked the question whether or not it had come to us and certainly I've had, I've had one of those complainants didn't like the outcome of the determination, didn't like the determination. So that did come to me, I then went back, had a look at it, had a look at all of the notes on it. I read through that, that person's email to me in detail, formed a view that it was transparent, fair and objective and the matter was, and the matter would be concluded. Now, on the back of that, and we heard this morning the union talk about requesting us to have an independent investigator, we've subsequently contacted someone who was suggested to us by the union. We're waiting on, on a fee proposal for them. And they were happy, more than happy for them to come and have a look at our process and whether or not we follow procedural fairness.
I appreciate that. I want to dive into the four complaints that were upheld. Now, I believe you said three of those complaints related to the Deputy Chief Inspector, is that correct?
Correct.
What actions, sorry, before I ask that question, did those three relate to the Deputy Chief Inspector while she was acting in the role as Deputy Chief Inspector?
Yes, that's right.
Okay, what actions did the organisation take in relation to the three upheld complaints?
Well, from memory, one was, one of those, one of the matters that was upheld related to a particular individual coming off a project. So the, the process around that, for, for that person coming off that project wasn't, probably wasn't done as well as we could have done it and given reasons for it. So we were a bit, we could have been clearer about that. So that was just a matter of making sure that when people come on and off particular project work, that they're given the reasons for it. So that was a discussion that was had.
What else are we looking at here?
So the, the other two related into communication, so.
Abusive communication?
Yeah, well, one, one of those, so the remaining two related to two different people, two different people who were alleging bullying. One, there was a situation between an inspector and the DCI and there were some raised voices. And that was acknowledged by both parties, that there were some raised voices. And on that occasion, we spoke.
I'm not asking you to, to run defence, I'm asking you for the details in relation to what was discovered and what actions the RSPCA took.
I'm coming to that, Mr. Fang.
Okay, well, I'd ask you to.
So, well, I'm, I'm giving it to you so you've got some context because they're not, they're not always simple matters.
Let me be, let me be totally blunt with you, okay? The answers you gave me last time in the previous inquiry where I asked you around the safe work notices and you gave me every which answer, but actually being clear about what safe work notice, safe work improvement notices you'd received was, I think, disgraceful, okay? You were, you were opaque, you were not clear and you were evasive in relation to those matters. I think you're doing exactly the same now in relation to these, my, my request for the details of three bullying allegations that have been made that were substantiated. Not to mention the, the, the other 30 odd that, that were unsubstantiated. I'm asking for clear guidance around what was substantiated and what actions you took.
I'm coming to those answers, Mr. Fang.
Well, I ask you to come to that place.
I'm coming to them, but I'm giving you context because it's really important. Because some people don't necessarily like outcomes and they think that, you know, for whatever reason, they carry more weight than they do, or when someone looks at them objectively, says, well, you know what, you've got to look at both sides of the story and that's typically what happens in these things.
Mr. Fang, you're not sounding like a very impartial person here. You're sounding like somebody who's trying to run defence for the Deputy Chief Inspector. I'm asking you for the detail.
I hear the point of order.
Sorry, Chair, and apologies, Mr. Fang, but I do need to take point of order. There's been a number of questions now that have been proceeded with commentary that is opinion about what Mr. Fang thinks of the answer rather than it actually being a question. It's getting to the point of, of being a bit unfair and badgering.
Yeah, I would have, I would have to agree, but can I just ask Mr. Fang, in the, for the sake of time, can we just get to the outcome of the two, was it two, two remaining ones?
Certainly, on both occasions, those matters were addressed with the Deputy Chief Inspector in terms of how to communicate with staff. So they didn't warrant, for, for context, they didn't warrant formal disciplinary action.
Okay.
They, they were the findings.
So in relation then to the reporting to the board, what does the board get instructed in relation to these upheld complaints?
It might come up in, in general business or something like that.
There's no formal HR report that goes to the board to say that there's been three upheld complaints against the Deputy Chief Inspector in relation to the conduct?
It would depend on the severity, Mr. Fang, if they were serious and we take all bullying matters seriously. But you've, again, you have to put them into context. We can't go to the board with every minor operational thing and report on it.
How many inspectors do you currently have that are off on sick leave, mental health leave or a, a case of, you know, workplace? a case of, you know, workplace stress leave?
I think when I was here last time, you asked how many resulted in workers' comp claims, so.
Well, now I'm asking you, how many do you have off at the moment?
Specifically on workers' compensation? I think we, there were four and two have been denied by the insurer. So I think the answer's two, but Mr Myers is nodding at me. So I think the answer's two, Mr Feen.
You have two inspectorate staff off on stress leave. Now, in the questions.
We have two inspectors on workers' comp.
Just picking up on that, how many, how many inspectors would you say you are short or vacant of in terms of positions as well?
At present, we've got, I think there's six vacancies in total across the inspectorate.
Which is fifty-nine F T Es.
And who is included in that fifty-nine F T E? Are you included in that, Mr Crumm?
No, no, sorry. Our chief inspector and deputy.
Chief and deputy chief inspector.
Team leaders, inspectors.
Digital surveillance members, given that they do sort of.
Oh, one is, yeah, yeah.
They're included as well?
Yeah.
Okay.
On page ten, sorry, on page ten, question twenty-one, how many inspectors have resigned from the RSPCA in the last twelve months? Four inspectors have retired and six have resigned. Question twenty-two, how many inspectors have had their employment terminated by the RSPCA in the past twelve months? No inspectors were terminated.
That's correct.
Can I ask, was there a termination of a, an inspector that was perhaps changed in status?
What do you mean changed in status, Mr Feen?
Did you terminate somebody in the previous twelve months that then had their status being changed from terminated?
No, no. So we've been through a process, and I think Ms Boyd asked the question before at the, at the beginning today about N D As. So I believe we've had one process with one inspector some months ago where that inspector asked, requested if they could resign, rather than continue on through a performance management issue. And because we're a good employer and we want to help them out, we decided we would, we would do that, and it was a negotiated outcome.
Okay. I'll have some further questions at the end, but I think, I think I know where I'm going to go.
Ms Hurst?
Thank you. As you know, there's been a lot of discussion about inspectors going out in pairs. And that was a previous recommendation from this committee in this annual inquiry. You clarified in your answers to questions on notice that despite the previous funding from the New South Wales Government last year, you're still not sending two inspectors to every job. Can we get some more information around why this still isn't happening, given the safety concerns?
I can answer that. We don't have double the inspectors to be able to send two people to every job. So what we did was we had an increase across our regions. So based on a risk assessment where we review jobs, if there's violence warnings, previous history, areas where there's no communications, we will endeavour to send two people. We've also had a number of people that commenced employment with us that during their probation period determined the job wasn't for them. So there's been a bit of turnover in that regard, and we're still actively recruiting. Recruitment's hard, especially for that sort of uptake in people and looking for previous enforcement, law enforcement or regulatory roles. People that are, have some experience in investigating. We want to ensure that we get the right people. Our inspectors are suitably qualified and trained and are good, they're good inspectors, okay?
Yeah, sorry, can I just jump in? Just because I want to go back to this idea of how many are going in pairs, can I get an estimation from you around the percentage that, the percentage of jobs that are still being done in solo compared to in pairs?
It can vary, it can vary daily.
So, like, you know, in the last six months, what percentage do you think is solo and what percentage? And I'm happy for you to take it on notice, and I don't need exact figures. I'm just trying to get an understanding of an estimation.
And I could probably take it on notice to provide it. But I mean, initially with the training phase, every new inspector went out you know, with other, other suitably qualified and trained inspectors. As they've received further training and received their authorities, they might go to routine jobs or jobs where there's no risk identified. They might go to those jobs on their own.
So this is, this is brand new.
Take it in notice.
These are brand new inspectors with no training could potentially be sent out solo if it was considered a low-risk job?
Would depend on their experience.
So when you say that, you mean if they're a former police officer versus somebody that's left university?
Correct.
Can I just pick up on that? In that last part of your answer, you said when they get their authority. So are you saying that inspectors, new inspectors were going out paired up with a more experienced inspector without the actual authority?
The new inspectors, yeah, there's a process of time, Chair, where they'll go through training. We provide a number of documents to New South Wales D P I and apply for their authority.
So in that lag time, they're essentially acting without authority?
No, they're assisting inspectors that have authority.
Right.
Would the person of interest be aware that one of the inspectors is not an authorised inspector, or would they tend to think that this is two inspectors rather than one that's only in training? Like, is it clear that one, one of those individuals is still in training?
I'm not sure whether they would say this is an inspector that's in training, certainly through their epalets. So similar to police, probationary inspectors were a blank epalet, as opposed to different ranking of, and grading of inspectors.
So there's some visual clue of that.
Sorry, and, sorry, Scott. The SOPs do require all inspectors to notify their name, rank and what power they are exercising upon the exercise of that power. And so, of course, those training inspectors would not be holding themselves out to be inspectors when they're not. They would properly identify themselves but not hold out that they have authority.
Just to clarify, that would be something that they verbally say or P O I, yeah. Okay, thank you.
And I certainly have seen footage where I've witnessed them do that.
Thank you. Are there rules?
Sorry, and might I just also add, I've also seen footage where there's not two inspectors out. There are three inspectors, two police officers, three vet nurses and a veterinarian. So whilst, yes, we are heading towards risk assessed, double up or two up inspectors. We also have a number of matters where we're not sending two inspectors. We're sending, you know, seven RSPCA staff plus New South Wales Police.
In regards to when, when somebody is sent out to a job solo or in pairs, or, you know, some of these bigger operations with other agencies. Are there any sort of specific rules that are set out within the RSPCA in regards to, like, this is when this would be acceptable, this is when it's not, or is it kind of a judgment call?
In terms of a risk assessment, so that's, I mean, there's a couple of documents that are currently in progress and with consultation with the inspectors to improve our risk assessments.
Specifically for when someone is sent out solo versus in a pair?
Yes, it's about identifying risk prior to them going. So there's a number of things they could go to on their own, could be trade inspections. Routine, they could be delivering paperwork. There could be a number of different reasons as to why they'd go on their own.
But those, those processes of the rules are in draft form at the moment, you say?
They're in consultation with the team, yes.
Okay, so at the moment, there's nothing, but you're working towards something?
Uh, no, I think there's something. I mean, the inspectors work closely with their team leaders and with other senior inspectors. So before their, their experience, so they talk about jobs and associated risk. And if there's a risk, they will go in a, in a pair as a pretty routine thing.
I believe one of the concerns from the safe work notices was that RSPCA, New South Wales received, sorry, was around the lack of documentation regarding sending inspectors out in pairs. Is that the reason why these new documentation is being developed?
There was specifically to a second officer policy, so a two-officer policy. And when that, when that's required to take place. There was also, I think, a condition on the safe worth notice about addressing violence in the workplace, which is the community for us.
I'm sorry, so is that the reason, the safe work notices, is that part of the reason why this new documentation is being put together in regards to when somebody will be sent out alone or?
To have a formalised process.
Okay, and so that's come out of that process?
Correct.
Yep. Another key recommendation from the previous inquiry was ensuring that there's sufficient funding to staff animal cruelty response team twenty-four seven, so people can receive phone calls. Is that now happening?
Yes.
Yep. And how does that work? Does that mean that there are inspectors rostered on twenty-four seven?
Sure. Yep. So the contact centre will contact whoever the duty officer is or the inspector that's on call. After a certain period of time at night, the calls will come directly through to me. They'll refer them to me if they're urgent in nature.
And what if it's a rural call, like somewhere rural is that, what's the process if a call comes in at two AM in a very remote area of New South Wales?
So there's a, there's a process with our contact centre as to where, how they refer it, whether it is referred to police or they can call me if it's urgent in nature, just depending on what it is.
Okay, so it's just the call centre that's twenty-four seven now. But for a lot of emergencies, that will still technically be probably referred to the police unless you individually could potentially go out there or find someone that can.
Unless the call's referred through to me, and then I can call an inspector on to duty.
There are on-call officers.
Oh, there are on-call officers. How many on-call officers would there be in out of office hours?
I think, probably off the top of my head, maybe three?
And are they metro or are they?
Two metro and a regional. Actually, that'd be, sorry, it'd be four. Two regional, two metro, two regional.
Okay. And how do you choose the two regional ones?
It's on a roster that rotates every nine weeks.
Okay. And so, I mean, I'm assuming that would only cover kind of a very minute area of those regional areas. And so you're still sort of relying on the police, I suppose, for most of those rural areas?
I can be corrected if, if I'm not right here, but if, if the, my understanding is that the on-duty inspector, if they're geographically nowhere near that location and the police decide to attend, that they're still available for advice?
Correct.
By the police?
How often do the police choose not to attend?
I don't know that we could know that. If we, if we refer the matter, I understand that police link have a position that they don't necessarily tell us.
So you don't necessarily know what happens to it?
On the basis that they have the same independence policies that we do. How they exercise their discretion to take matters under P O T is similarly a matter for them. I will say that, for example, I took possession of a carcass that was being necropsied at Yeguna at seven o'clock one morning when police turned up. So sometimes we are making the ends meet as best we can to make sure that investigations aren't compromised by, you know, access to forensic pathology or whatever the situation might be.
Does the RSPCA keep a register of injuries occurring, sorry, incurred by inspectors on the job?
Yes.
Have any inspectors been attacked or assaulted while going out on a job in the past two years?
Yes.
Yes.
Can you, I understand if you want to take this on notice, are you able to give us the figures of the number of assaults that has occurred in the last two years?
I can take it on notice unless Mr Myers knows off the top of his head.
I'd take it on notice.
I'll take that on notice, Deputy Chair.
There've been a number where New South Wales Police commenced proceedings for assault in conjunction with our P O T matters. So there have been some. The three that I'm aware of all happened with more than two inspectors and more than two police officers present at the premises when the assault happened.
Can you also include in that just any, for want of a better word, near misses or or serious instances where the inspector didn't get assaulted but felt threatened in some way in doing their duties?
We can certainly report on anything that's been reported to us.
The near misses are meant to be reported to us. I suppose it depends on the individual, whether or not, what they consider near.
Have you noticed any increase over the last years, several years, in incidences?
Yes.
You have?
And the matters that I've appeared in have resulted in jail sentences, so bites to inspectors, inspectors being bitten by defendants. Inspectors being pulled, inspectors having multiple large breed dogs, for want of a better word, sicced on them.
And do you have any hypothesis as to why there's been an increase in assaults on RSPCA inspectors?
Well.
And I understand that's a, yeah.
I do. I mean, it's a gut born of seventeen years prosecutions experience, I suppose, and seven years at the RS. I think when I first started, we were prosecuting a decent number of what I would call single skinny dog cases. And we don't prosecute single skinny dog cases anymore. Essentially, they would be dealt with by way of penalty infringement notice or some other mechanism. So we are investigating more serious allegations of animal cruelty. I think there are concomitant socio-economic factors that are impacting on populations that are inclined to commit criminal offences generally, of course. And I think, you know, I'm doing a PhD in respect of the link between animal cruelty and domestic violence right now. My gut is we're seeing a lot of it, and I will wait to see what the statistics show, what the court outcomes might say about that. Certainly, I'm seeing a lot of fairly high-level domestic violence associated with animal cruelty prosecutions, such that we're, we kind of have parallel investigations and prosecutions whereby New South Wales Police might be prosecuting assaults and breaches of apprehended domestic violence orders whilst we are also prosecuting those kind of offences of commission rather than omission. So historically, the RSPCA has prosecuted a lot of failure to vet trade, failure to provide proper insufficient food, drink, shelter. I think we are seeing a bit more kind of overt acts of cruelty whereby injuries are purposefully inflicted on animals. So I think, I think all of that taken as a whole might be leading to what we're seeing. And I think the courts are seeing it similarly because, as I say, they're sentencing penalties of imprisonment rather than those kind of mid-tier fairly lengthy bonds.
And if I could just squeeze in one more question. And Ms Judge, you might be the best one for this in regards to the prosecutions that arise. You know, obviously, there's going to be more metro inspectors than rural inspectors generally. But do you see a significant difference between the number of prosecutions that are coming from metro inspectors compared to, and also, you know, search warrant applications from the metro inspectors compared to some of the regional areas?
No, we see what I experienced at the D P P, which was that in certain regional centres, you get certain types of crime and that the animal cruelty takes the same kind of trajectory that I've seen elsewhere. And so areas with lower socio-economic, Indisha areas with higher rates of other types of criminal offending have similarly relatively high rates of animal cruelty offending. So there are regional courts where myself and the lawyers we use, my two solicitors and the lawyers we instruct are regularly, and you can kind of pin those on a map. Yeah. And so it's a different type of animal cruelty, but it takes the same course that I expect you see in other types of crime. Does that answer your question?
A little bit. I think I've got to follow up on that as for you.
I'm trying not to malign particular areas. I could sit here and give you the map, but I am trying not to do that.
I might just throw to Ms McDonald for the last question.
I wanted to just go to one of your questions on notice. I think it was on page twenty-three nine with regards to staffing, staff engagement and satisfaction. So you do a survey each year, and you've got five hundred and sixty staff roughly. What percentage of staff would complete the survey?
I'd have to take that on, on notice, but it's a very well-used platform that we have. It's called Workplace. And it's used daily by hundreds of people. It's a, it's a very strong communication tool.
On that, are you also able to provide like a copy of the survey that you give to the employees? And when the results come back in, and I note that you've said that the aggregate ratings are satisfied. that the aggregate ratings are satisfactory to very satisfactory, but next year, you would obviously want it to be higher than that. So, how do you review those results so that, you know, with your structure, your culture, leadership, staff engagement, training, um, how do you implement some of those? I, I, because I haven't seen the survey, but how do you review it so that, um, you're getting better engagement with your staff?
We, we have an internal engagement team, um, so it, um, um, they take information like this and anecdotal information and day-to-day communications. Um, and then they have a, um, a schedule of work, if you like. They plan out typically over a, a six to twelve month period, and they'll have everything in it from, um, engagement activities like are you okay day, N A doc week, all that sort of stuff. Um, and, um, and so, these are the sorts of things that they would put into it as well. If there was a particular issue that we wanted to address, that would go into that work programme in the, in the coming six to twelve months, um, and, uh, they'd, they'd put some resources to those programmes.
And so, how long have you been doing the surveys?
Um, well, though, these one, these last ones have been done for about three years, I understand, because the, the platform's relatively, um, new. Um, that being said, um, Meta, who owns the platform, have announced that they're going to, um, they're going to terminate that service, so we'll be replacing it. Prior to that, there were some employee engagement surveys that were done at a national level that were organised by R S P C A Australia, I understand, um, just because it was a, a, a simple way to do it and collate the information.
Okay, thank you.
Chair, can I foreshadow that, um, I believe we're going to need a further hearing. I believe that.
No, I'm just, I'm just indicating so that people are aware. Um, I believe we're going to need a further hearing. I believe that there were a number of questions that I asked
in which I was given deliberate misleading, uh, answers. And so, I believe we will need, I believe we will need to bring the board.
Yeah.
I believe we will need to bring the board in for a hearing.
Mr Feen, thank you for that. Um, that's probably a discussion that we should have as a committee without the R S P C A.
Oh, I'm happy if they know.
No, no offence. Um, but yeah, that is the time, and, um, well, it is over time. So, thank you very much for coming again, and thank you for the handbook that you provided and the answers that you gave on, on notice. Uh, you did take some questions on, on notice. Um, so the committee secretary will be in touch in terms of the timeframe to get them back. Unfortunately, they will be a little bit shorter just in terms of our, the timeframe, just in terms of our reporting date, um, which we're negotiating. So, um, thank you.
Can I, can I just inquire, I'm sorry, the Hollingsworth question that I took on notice, are you wanting all thirteen prosecutions?
Uh, no.
Because that will govern how long it's going to take me.
Can I just ask you, you said that some of the older files are in storage. What do you have access to and how far back is the storage?
I have easy access to twenty nineteen.
Twenty nineteen till now?
Twenty eighteen, I'll withdraw that. Twenty eighteen.
From, from back to twenty?
Twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-four.
Yeah, can we just have a look at that then, please?
Easily.
Um, so you don't have to go to storage.
And just for future reference, you are always welcome to seek extensions on, on questions that on notice if you need more time. Most committees, we're pretty generous in. If someone comes to us and says, oh, I need more time to get a submission in, I need more time for questions or answers back, we generally agree to it. So, just in future, feel free.
Thank you, Chair.
To do that.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, that is us. Um, we may have to have a delivery just in terms of the handbook, um, and that, but, um, you guys are free to go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.